Nineteen regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. Kathy Wagner of Outreach Children's Ministry will be doing the invocation today. We will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Manuel Barboa.
The Bible says in Timothy two-two that we are to pray for our authorities so that we can live peacefully. Heavenly Father, as we have this meeting tonight, help us to remember who is ultimately in charge and that as these council people go through their meetings, that we will listen and heed their words, but that they will be wise and we will be wise in our decisions as well. In your son's name, Jesus, amen.
Praise our flag. Raise your right hand over your hat and repeat with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to both of you. Councilmember Montero has a presentation on the agenda. Donation check to Hawthorne Recreation and Community Service Department by Monita Gardens Improvement. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, the Memorial Center, you know, every time we have an event over there, people complain about the sound system. So I know Vaughn has been looking for money to replace the sound system at the Venus Room. So you know, I'm one of the people that goes to the Venus Room maybe about 10 times a year. So, and I know the sound system is going to cost about $4,000?
Double.
Double? Oh, wow. So this token of $500 is not going to make a dent on that bill, right? But I want to give this to Vaughn so for the Steel Hawthorne, for the donation, for the sound system for the Memorial Center. So it's a beginning, right?
It is. It is. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Pro temp Council. On behalf of the Recreation Community Service Department, I'd like to say thank you. If I can just explain what we're doing there, for we can all be abreast on what we're doing as far as improvements. It's the sunroom that we're going to improve the sound system in. And with that being said, we're going to get three sets of JBL speakers and we're going to divide the room into three sections. So we have front speakers, middle speakers, and rear speakers. We're going to...
Hold on. Your boss wants to take a picture. Okay, we'll hold it. We'll hold the check for you.
Bigger check.
So where I left off is that we're going to have three sets of speakers. They're going to be JBLs, which is the same sound system that we actually have in the Betty Amesworth. We're using the same vendor that actually installed the speakers there. He's a reliable vendor and we've had great success with him. We're going to have three amps. We'll have a Tin Jack microphone setup and we're looking for completion of the work to be done before the community dinner, May 23rd. So thank you and thank you again.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please read the guidelines for oral communication, sir.
During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any item not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies, as a body, shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer your remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
And once again, thank you for condensing that. It used to seem like it was a little race to try to finish this with all the previous city clerks that had to read that long. So now we can hear it nice and smooth and clean. Thank you. Kathy Wagner?
Good evening. I'm the founder of Outreach Children's Ministry, teaching at JC Bible Clubs, and I've had the privilege of teaching for the last eight years in the Wisburn Hawthorne School District. And I'm just having a fundraiser on Thursday at Panda Express and it raises funds so I can do other ministries during the summer and with the kids during the school year. So I did bring a flyer. All you need to do is take a picture of it and you can present it. It has a little coat on it. If you want to have a party afterward, you can have it. It's from four to nine on Thursday. Thank you very much. I'm going to hand this to your clerk and then I did leave some flyers out of the front.
Four to nine, which day and which location?
Thursday. You'll have to go into the other city, Lawndale, the Lawndale on Hawthorne Boulevard.
Okay.
Four to nine this Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you again. Anybody else wishing to address the city council? Form a line, please.
Daniel Granados, Hawthorne Library. Just a couple of announcements I wanted to make. First, I'm pleased to announce that Hawthorne Library has been selected to host a series of programs in 2019 as part of LA County's My Brothers Keeper Initiative. My Brothers Keeper was founded by former President Obama to engage young men of color in higher education and career training. So our first program is this Thursday, March 14th, at 4:30. The program is called Side Hustle Savvy: Understanding Pathways to Starting Your Own Business. The program is for young people ages 15 to 24 and it's designed to provide clear information on turning a passion or side job into a business. It's this Thursday, March 14th, at 4:30. I'm also happy to announce that this morning, the Institute of Museum and Library Services, which is a federal agency, announced that LA County Library is among its National Medal finalists for 2019. This is the library's second year in a row being nominated and we are the only library system in California to receive a nomination. So on this upcoming Friday, March 15th, IMLS will be featuring LA County Library on their Facebook and Twitter pages. We encourage you to share how LA County Library has impacted your life by visiting their social media pages and commenting on their posts. Thank you.
Through the chair, may I say something on this?
Yes.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for presenting that. I just wanted to comment on the fact that you know that the city of Hawthorne adopted My Brothers Keeper as its own initiative several years ago, so I'm happy to hear that you're continuing that effort. And I would like to ask you, what are the other dates of the programs in the series?
That's the only date we have at this time. They're being planned centrally and they're kind of letting us know when they happen.
Thank you. Will you come back and let us know?
I'll let you know as soon as we find out. Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? If not, I declare oral communications close ordered. Mr. Clerk, may we have your consent calendar, please, sir?
Mr. Mayor, I have seven items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item six, approval of the city council minutes for the regular meeting of February 12th, 2019, and the regular meeting of February 26th, 2019. Item seven, approval waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item eight, city treasurer requests approval of the warrants. Item 11, resolution number 8056, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California proclaiming the month of March as Red Cross Month. Item 12, resolution number 8057, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California opposing Senate Bill 330 Skinner Housing Crisis Act of 2019. Item 13, resolution number 8058, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California opposing Assembly Bill Five Gonzalez Fletcher Carla Opportunity to Work Act. Item 14, resolution number 8059, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California supporting AB 147 McGuire relating to the collection of sales and use of taxes from online and out-of-state retailers without a physical presence in California for adoption.
I'd like to pull 12, 13, and 14 for discussion.
Ooh, okay. That sounds okay. I have no opposition to that. Okay, I move to approve items six, seven, eight, 11.
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council, city council voting yes.
Go ahead with item 12, resolution number 8057.
Okay, so this is Senate Bill 330, okay. So this is, we are asking, I asked the city attorney to agendize this item because I think the solution is not tailored to the problem. This is against SB 330, the housing bill. The problem is the overall shortage of housing in California. SB 330 does not take into account cities like Hawthorne that have fulfilled their commitment to solving the housing crisis. All residents can see for themselves the massive apartment and condo complexes that have been constructed in the past few years. Before this relatively new construction, Hawthorne has been well-known to be the densest city in the South Bay with more than its fair share of apartment complexes with more than 100 units each. SB 330 is an attempt to punish our city and other cities like us by requiring even more dense housing when our city has outperformed all other cities within 50 miles. There is a housing crisis, but I believe that Hawthorne has made a major dent in fulfilling its RENA numbers. SB 330 would freeze local zoning controls, but that is a drastic remedy and it's not necessary since Hawthorne has been building housing already at an aggressive pace for many years. SB 330 would limit public hearings to only three, but this seems to conflict with the time limits imposed by CEQA, which is the determinative factor in land use deadline. SB 330 speeds up proposed vesting of developments on a faster timeline than tentative maps or development agreements. Again, this is a drastic measure which is not required in our city since we are doing our proportionate share of fulfilling the state's housing needs. The city's own planning commission has been doing a great job already in dealing with the housing shortage. We don't need SB 330 to seize the authority of our local land use body. This is why I'm asking my colleagues to vote to approve resolution number 8057 opposing SB 330.
Anybody else have any comments? Go ahead, sir.
Well, no, I agree with Councilwoman Valentine. I was just doing some math on the square miles of Hawthorne versus all the other cities and it's true. I mean, we've got more people per square mile than anyone else around here. And so you're kind of, you know, they're taking away the right that we should have as to what we do with our city and where we put, or what we put in our city. So yeah, no, I think that, I can't believe that they keep trying, you know, that it keeps coming back and it keeps coming back and so...
And there's probably going to be more built.
Yeah, yeah. And then, you know, developers obviously are, you know, wow, chopping at the bit, you know, but no, I agree with Olivia on this.
Yes, sir. Go ahead. Through the chair. Yeah, I also agree because like Ms. Valentine said, you know, Hawthorne is one of the densest cities in South Bay and not recent past, it was the seventh most dense city in the United States by square mile. Because we have only 5.9 square mile and then we have all these apartment buildings. So I do agree that we need to oppose this bill. And seeing I see Mrs. Patel from the Senator Bradford's office, I want to clarify about the SB 50, that the last meeting, nobody in this diocese mentioned that that bill belongs to Steve Bradford. We knew exactly who that bill belongs to, who was the actor of that bill. So I want to clarify that I didn't say that it was his bill and none of us did say because I got a phone call the next day from Senator Bradford saying that that was not his bill. But Skinner bill and the Wise's bill is almost identical, right, to limit our power to government and we need to stop that. Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, so the thing is that our city, by through history and through rapid development and whatever the dynamics were on the council, starting in the mid to late 60s, some of the old timers who have been here, Hawthorne Historical Society know what happened. There was members of the council that had a real estate interest and once they annexed Monita Gardens, it was a free-for-all because they had these deep lots, which they preferred not to leave as ranch houses, but to take advantage and build the high density that they did and all the other stuff we could talk about for ad nauseam as to how it developed at such a rapid rate and just became uncontrollable. So by the mere fact of that, that shouldn't have been disregarded because that was not a official city council-initiated, you know, increase in housing. That should also be taken into consideration that there's housing increases that took place on their own by people applying and having loose requirements for that. But then on top of that, we have these RENA numbers that we have to satisfy. And the city of Hawthorne has about 683 while the city of Rolling Hills has a requirement of six. The city of Rolling Hills Estate has a RENA requirement of five. Hermosa Beach has a RENA requirement of two. Rantall Palos Verdes, 31. Palos Verdes Estates, 16. Manhattan Beach, 38. Lomita, 47. Hawthorne, 683, I wanted to remind you guys. Elsa Gundo, 69. Culver City, 185. Even Lawndale, which is similar in makeup, is 381. So that's very disproportionate and I think it's very, it's not considering what we have existing already. So I think we have a, so the fact that, I think the governor and these state senators and assembly members are just not considering the case-by-case basis, considering this on a case-by-case basis and just painting all cities with the same brush as to, you know, say, hey, you know what, there's some special considerations to take place. If this is not Steve Bradford's, State Senator Steve Bradford's bill, if he votes for it, it will be his. So we respectfully ask you to go back to your state senator and tell him what our position is, that we're opposed to it, to have a dialogue with the city, to come and see what the specific dynamics here in the city are. In a sense, I think everybody here agrees that there's a housing crisis, that if there were more product, there would be less cost for people to live, right, that you could afford housing. We do, we're not disagreeing with that. But as I mentioned, those lists of cities, when it comes to the RENA numbers aspect, you know, that just kind of being disproportionate between us. The fact that they're painting this with the broad brush, when we've already done a great share of development here in the city of Hawthorne and seeing that a lot of these people have been getting off the hook, I agree with this governor, yes. Okay, I got it, there's a housing crisis. But let these people in these other cities do their fair share. So let's refrain from what we're doing, let's take a look and let's see how we can get them to kind of do their fair share and do what they have to do. Like, let's slow down. You'll get supporters in the city council, yeah, I would agree. Cut us a break, let these other people step up. The governor had no problem going after Huntington Beach, okay? He went after a couple of other cities, but we have neighbors around us that are not doing what they have to do. So I gave you some numbers there so you could just know that it's not just based on talk, that RENA numbers, like, in the single digits compared to us, we're in the like hundreds. So that's totally not fair.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
All you need to do is take a drive-through Hawthorne. Drive-through Hawthorne at any time during the day and see how tightly packed the people are in the apartment complexes, how difficult it is to drive and park anywhere in those areas. All you need to do is do that to realize that we cannot afford to have any more housing over there. All you need to do is drive through Hawthorne during rush hour and see how difficult it is to get through the streets, how tightly it is, how difficult it is to drive through the streets, and difficult it is to find a parking space. So I think anyone who did that would realize one size does not fit all and Hawthorne definitely is an exception to whatever need the government sees to have more housing. We do not need more housing.
The density in the city of Hawthorne is 14.5, almost 15,000 people per square mile. 15,000. So I think from what I see here, the city of Lawndale has about 16,000 people per square mile, so they're in the same bind as us, so they need to be looked at very carefully too. We support them as well. So would you like to make the motion to go ahead with that?
Yes, I move that we oppose SB 330.
I second. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Next item, please.
Okay.
Discussion.
AB 5. So this is the resolution number 8058 opposing Assembly Bill Five, which is called the Opportunity to Work Act. Not sure if that's the right name for it. AB 5 deals with the California Supreme Court's April 2018 decision in Dynamex Operations West Inc. versus Superior Court of Los Angeles, which changed the way a person is classified as an independent contractor versus an employee in this state. Dynamex has far-reaching negative implications for nearly all sectors of the California economy that utilize independent contractors. We have to remember that California has an extremely diverse economy that requires a label force of short-term duration and freelancers as opposed to permanent employees. A lot of people like to work as independent contractors and a lot of people do. Dynamex abandoned a previously adopted balancing of factors test for a much more stringent test that is not suited to California's economy, which is why the California Chamber of Commerce has labeled AB 5 as a job killer. AB 5 will impose new requirements on employers, including increased costs for hiring employees rather than independent contractors. As a result, it is predicted that employers simply will not hire people in need of jobs. The increased costs of AB 5 will include fines, litigation, technical violations, and endless document retention requirements. It will require unnecessary document burdens on small employers by requiring documentation when employees are reassigned to other facilities and justifying why one employee is given increased hours while another one is not. In light of the restrictive ABC test outlined by the court in Dynamex, the work opportunities of millions of independent contractors could be in jeopardy. I oppose AB 5 because it fails to protect valuable work opportunities for individuals who prefer the flexibility of working as independent contractors. And I invite my colleagues to also oppose Assembly Bill Five by passing resolution 8058.
Mr. City Attorney, do you have anything else you'd like to add with regards to this from your perspective?
Councilmember Valentine covered all bases.
Yes? Okay. Councilmember Taya, do you want to say something?
You know, I, being in the real estate business, automatically we were looked at as independent contractors. And basically, the criteria was is that you don't tell me what to do, you pay me for the end result. I don't work for you. I'm paid as an independent contractor and that goes for any plumber that shows up at my house and that shows up for anybody in business. So if you're going to take those people and you're going to turn them into employees simply so you could tax them a little bit more or get a little bit more social security, I think that's a bad, I don't understand the logic in this law. I don't see any reason to change their current status. I don't know why they're doing this. You're right about a job killer, that this would kill a lot of people.
I think conceptually, they believe they're protecting employees by allowing them to have the opportunity for benefits. But of course, that assumes that they want to be employees.
Yeah.
And a lot of young people and a lot of people in general like to work as independent contractors. They don't want the burden of being an employee. They want to be independent and they want to be able to have the flexibility of working their own hours.
Well, there's some risks with being an independent contractor, but that's how you gain, you know? That's how you make it. So no, I totally agree with opposing this. They're constantly trying to change everything.
And trying to ply a trade and trying to get as many jobs is because there's small-time gigs that they have and to complicate the process by having every go-through, the application process, the processing, contacting Sacramento, I mean, that just impedes their ability to be able to just jump from job site to job site or gig to gig if they're musicians or DJs.
Right, right.
It's like, what do you mean, I have to go apply through for this at your city? What do you mean?
There's no end to it once they start, too. That's the other problem.
I mean, we understand and respect what the premise of the whole thing, to try to protect the job, the employees, the worker, but this kind of, I mean, you're going to put people out of business. People who are growing business from nothing, people who are just immigrants to this country that come start a business and are just barely at that point where they're just, you know, less than 10 employees themselves and they count on these independent contractors. It's going to be a headache.
You know, I think I agree with that, that we oppose this resolution.
Go ahead.
I agree too, because I did work as an independent contractor before for the LA Unified School District, so I understand the concept. And one of the things that I definitely, because what they're trying to do also is if you're an independent contractor, that means if you would consult with somebody else, right, or you would have some individual working under you, they want you to give the name of those people to the employer that hires you as an independent contractor. So they want a double A, double A, double A. So that is where it's not going to work. So I do agree with you.
Go ahead. Anybody want to make the motion, whoever's idea it was?
Yeah, I move that we pass resolution 8058 opposing, a resolution 8058 opposing AB 5. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
All right. Item number 14?
Okay. So I don't recommend opposition to everything. This one I recommend support of. This one is resolution 8059, a resolution supporting 147, which implements the Wayfair bill, the Wayfair case, I should say. The United States Supreme Court decision in South Dakota versus Wayfair has a momentous impact on our state because it now allows the collection of sales and use taxes from online and out-of-state retailers who have no physical presence in California. Senator Mike McGuire, Chair of the Senate Committee on Governance and Finance, and Assemblywoman Autumn Burke, Chair of the Assembly Committee on Revenue and Taxation, have introduced AB 147, which implements the provisions of Wayfair. AB 147 removes the competitive advantage online and out-of-state businesses who did not collect sales tax had over brick-and-mortar California retailers who have always collected taxes. The good news is that revenue from AB 147 may exceed $554 million to the state and of course Hawthorne will get some of that. The intent of AB 147 is to modernize California law consistent with the holding of Wayfair, which allows this state to impose a use tax collection duty on retailers who have specified levels of economic activity in this state. They have economic activity in the state, but they're not in the state technically. They do not have a physical presence in the state. It's also the intent of AB 147 to ensure that small businesses are not unduly burdened by the expansion of the duty to collect use tax. I support AB 147 because it will enhance the revenue stream, not only for the state of California, but also for the city of Hawthorne. So I invite my colleagues to join me in supporting resolution 8059, which supports, to support AB 147.
My understanding is a lot, great majority, a lot of businesses are already collecting tax, California tax, right? If you go on Amazon, the taxes that you fill out, state taxes, you're supposed to collect all those items that you bought from out of state and make an account and make a list and you'll do the correct percentage according to what you spent and estimate the tax and pay it, you know, to the state. You're right. I guess some people could just stay quiet and pretend that they didn't. I mean, if they got an audit, they'd get it really hard, right? You know, that's where the state and the federal government come down on people for that tax evasion stuff, right? But I mean, I get the essence of... But, I mean, I get the essence of this. But you, you mentioned that there's a pass-through to the city. Pass-through being like, they get the money and some of the money's passed through to us.
We hope.
Oh, man, I, I need assurance, because I, I mean, they can't, they come and take our, our redevelopment funds. They, who knows what else they're gonna come and take?
It, it can only be a good thing. It's a good thing. I, I would like to maybe get some clarification on that from, uh, from our city officials. Can anyone speak to that, about how that would work?
Yeah, that's a correct, uh, uh, Councilmember Valentine.
You are correc- uh, correct in that sense that there will be some, uh, and it won't be, uh, with help with any estate because this is like sales tax that, uh, you know, um, uh, uh, one percent of it comes to Hawthorne. And, um, and then, of course, we had measure H, H that was passed. So, uh, it is estimated maybe less than two hundred thousand a year will come to the city as a result. But this is mostly to support businesses in California to be able to compete with their counterpart, with their out-of-state counterparts. So, yeah.
So you, there's a dual purpose. Either one of be more than the other, like you said, our businesses, and we're gonna get a little bit of extra change over here.
Yes.
And that you already calculated foresaw.
Not, not yet. It's coming from, actually not from me, from the state.
As to what we probably get, okay, go ahead.
To the chair. Um, I was taking a taxi to the airport one evening, and in the course I got conversation with the, with the driver, and I said, "How's business?" He says, "Uber's killing us." And he went on, he said, "You know, we used to be, uh, the, we used to, uh, be the source of moving around, and Uber comes along and they don't have to have the insurances that we do. They don't have to have, uh, the certificates that we do. Uh, we are regulated, they're not, and so, uh, they kill them." So you get a, a upstart like Uber and it turned around and they killed that transportation industry. And, you know, so much of that happens in, in the internet, that they come along and by the time that somebody puts a, a stop to it, uh, you know, they've already killed everybody. And so, um, yeah, it only makes sense that if I buy a pair of pants that I should, uh, that I should, uh, pay taxes on that. Uh, and, or I go and I buy it online and then I don't have to pay. So it just doesn't, it's not fair. It's not a good business practice. And, um, yeah, I don't see any, I, I would in favor of, you know, making, leveling the playing field, as they say. So everybody has a, a little better shot. Because otherwise, a little bit here and a little bit there, you know, you're gonna kill the, some of the businesses. Or it makes it unfair. It just makes it unfair. So, yeah, I, I think that, um, makes sense.
Mister City Attorney, um, do you have any information with regards to what other states have a similar type of law that, uh, in which they're collecting taxes? Are we going to be the only ones, or do the other ones have?
I can't remember what the number was. It was like thirty or forty other states.
Okay, so they do, right?
Yes, in the same manner.
Got it.
And, and to the chair, but also this was the Supreme Court, the United States Supreme Court decision. So it's a, it's a, all the fifty state.
It will have, yes.
Would have similar bill like us, right, like California's trying to do. Because the case went all the way to Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court decide that they have to collect sales tax.
Oh, yeah.
For, for, for that, and that, and that is pretty, and, and only said ve- thing very critical is the competition. Because when you look at that, we got Macy's, JCPenney's, all of them closing, right? Lot of stores are closing because of online shopping. So when your local Macy's or JCPenney or TJ Maxx shuts down or close, there will be no more sales tax collected from those stores. So we have to find a way to collect tax, and then when we buy online, we have to pay that sales tax, and then they have to collect the sales tax. So that come to California and come to us. So we have to do it.
Which is only fair.
It is fair.
Okay, so I'll make the motion.
Second.
Um, you don't mind that I made, that I made the motion?
No, you go ahead.
All right, all right.
Um, for the record, that was Resolution number eight oh five nine, number fourteen on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Ordinance number twenty-one seventy-six, Mister City Attorney.
Item seventeen, ordinance number twenty-seven seventy-six, second reading. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, amending section twelve point zero four point three one to Title Twelve Streets and Sidewalks to chapter twelve point zero four Sidewalk and curb repair of the Hawthorne Municipal Code regarding maintenance and repair of sidewalks for adoption.
I move.
Second.
I wanted to ask.
Discussion. Go ahead. Discussion, yeah.
I'm not quite sure how it works.
Um, you could either capture it before we make a motion or do it after we make a motion.
Basically, this, uh, is if the sidewalk in front of my house is a little damaged and somebody falls down, I'm responsible for that. Is that correct?
Uh, you can be sued.
Okay, now, um.
But your homeowner's insurance would cover you.
Yeah, well, that, that was my next question. I asked my insurance agent, you know, what, what the city says that they're not responsible.
Oh, no, what, what's been happening is that right now, whenever somebody is sued for a slip and fall and the person that slipped sues the homeowner, the homeowner sues the city.
Okay, so that's, uh, that's how it works?
Yeah.
Okay, so in other words, the city, but right out is saying, "We're not gonna be responsible for that. You're gonna have to sue me."
Uh, yes.
Pretty much?
Yes.
Okay.
For the record, also, uh, a council member said that the city is conducting several hundred thousand dollar a year worth of sidewalk replacement and area.
No, no, no.
So we are methodically going annually and doing lots of repair work.
Right, no, no, I understand that. Okay, no, I'm clear on that.
Uh, I have a.
And for, for the record, the Hawthorne sidewalks are probably is better shaped than most surrounding cities.
This is true. No question. No question.
No question, well, yeah.
I do have a question. Through the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, does this me, now, do we, will this automatically, um, apply to our insurance policies? Will we have, or will, will we have to notify our insurance companies that this law has passed? And now they, that, uh, we're liable, so we, we would ask them to, to cover any expenses that, in case we're sued?
Uh, no notification requirement since, uh, the next time it becomes relevant is with our next lawsuit.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay, if, um, to the chair. If I have a problem right now currently on, in a sidewalk, what do I do? Do I take it upon myself to break up the sidewalk and fix it, or do I contact the city, or how do I take care of that?
I believe the city manager will tell you to get an encroachment permit.
Yes, uh, I should tell you that, like I said, we have a lease, and every year we are doing several hundred thousand dollar of work. So let's say, uh, you are among the ones that go to the lease, then city will take care of it. And the way we take care of it, there is a criteria. Uh, not every crack is considered hazardous.
Right, right, right.
You know, so, uh, those are cosmetic, you know? So we do the inspection, and if, for example, there is, uh, an offset, vertical offset of one inch in, in, in the sidewalk, that is considered hazardous. And there are different recipes, either we grind it or we do total replacement based on the condition of the sidewalk panels and where the joints are. And, um, and we do it. However, let's say you call us after completion of the capital projects for this current year. Then, um, you will be on the lease, and I can tell you, once someone in engineering can tell you that, okay, uh, you will be on the lease within next three months or four months, because we just completed one. Then within that three, four months, you are taking risk.
Okay, um, another question. Who owns, who is responsible for that part that the tree is in? Which is not the sidewalk, it's between the sidewalk and, yeah.
Are, are you watering your parkway tree?
Am I what?
Are you watering your parkway tree?
Yes, I, I do.
Do you, do you fix the sprinklers?
Yes, when they, my gardener does, you know?
You're responsible.
I'm responsible for that, okay, all right.
Yeah, however, I know where you are going with it. If there is three roots that is causing the problem.
That was one of my, that wasn't, yeah, I, I, then you're gonna.
Then it goes back to what I answered before. So if you fall within that gap that we, uh, we, we are to embark on a new project within that timeframe, you have some responsibility. You are taking your risk on that.
Right.
So we can somehow work it together.
Yeah, 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 no, I'm not concerned.
No, no, that's what we do. When I say you, I meant all residents. You know, typical residents will work it together to, you know, address, sometimes we go rampant with asphalt. To avoid, this is a temporary fix, to, to avoid, uh, that liability and hazardous condition. However, why this came to, to become a new, um, code is because some residents, it's not always tree or cosmetic or, or, uh, you know, upheaval of the subject. Sometimes residents do construction projects, and they damage that sidewalk. We have had those cases, by heavy equipment going through, they drive it or something, and then they ignore it. And then they want to leave it for, you know, a city.
Have the city fix it.
Yes, and, and this is something that it has to be addressed during the renovation, during the remodeling, during the whatever repair work they are doing. Uh, and sometimes they don't listen to inspector.
Right.
And they, uh, you know, start arguing. So in those cases, we wanna put them on notice, that that's the time for you to address. And this is everywhere in all cities. It's not only in Hawthorne. That we, we, when you do a remodeling work worth of ten thousand dollar or more, you are responsible to address this, um, the, you know, sidewalk curb, but the driveway issues.
Okay. I'm, I'm good.
Are you gonna keep watering that thing?
No, I have to.
Rip out the sprinklers. I don't know about that. I don't know about this no more.
Well, uh.
Do you wanna make the motion on this one?
Yeah, I make the motion to approve.
This is for you. Okay, move, mo- motion was made, seconded. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
All right.
Those are practical things.
Eighteen, please.
Ordinance number two-one-seven-seven, first reading. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, amending section two point zero six point one-nine-zero decorum generally of chapter two point six zero City Council of Title Two Administration, Civil Service, and Personnel of the Hawthorne mun- municipal code related to disruption of the city council meetings. For introduction.
For the benefit of the public, Mister City Attorney, can you give us the background on this?
Uh, the way that the ordinance is pres- presently worded, it gives you the discretion to determine what is disruptive. It cannot, we're trying to take away that discretion from you. It has to be actual disruption. Can't be a tactical disruption. It can't be a disruption that because somebody is saying something you don't like. It's gotta be actually disrupting the conduct of the meeting itself.
Absolutely. Okay.
To the chair.
Yes, discussion before the motions.
If they're using profanity, foul language, at what point, where, where's the cutoff?
All of us will, will witness whether or not that profanity is actually stopping the orderly conduct of the meeting. It's probably easier just to let the profanity continue and, and.
Oh, that's nice.
Okay, well, that's.
What you guys say.
That's it.
You're giving people ideas out there.
So, so, so if, if I'm not, if I'm correct, then the, the standard is that it's something that's actually disruptive, not, not that it could be disruptive, it is actually disruptive.
Uh, yes, one example of a court case I saw was, uh, somebody who dumped all their trash at the podium, and that disrupted the meeting.
Yes, I would say so.
That person's arrest was considered lawful.
What prompted this?
Uh, it was just a court of appeals decision.
Okay. Well, I'll certainly take the risk if I feel something's, uh, being disruptive or not. Um, and asking our Sergeant of Arms to step in if need be. And I think we've had a, a couple, we've had minimal examples of that, folks. I gotta really say that, you know, our, our, uh, city council meetings have been really tame, and people just come up with good, uh, you know, topics. Some people might go off topic and talk about, like, visiting San Diego and their, their, their travels and the road trips they're doing, and like, you know what? Um, actually, that's a good point, Mister City Attorney. What if it goes off topic like that? Where they're telling us what they did over the weekend?
I, I don't believe that's disruptive. It's annoying, it's, it's not.
So we just gotta hear that and? Freedom of speech? Up, no, I mean, I'm just saying, well, that, those indivi- just remember, guys, you, you risk being seen kind of as like being off-topic yourself, so your, you know, your reputation is at stake for going up there and talking about stuff that's off-topic, so that's really up to you guys. Okay? That's not really us, it's you, so. Who wants to make the motion? I'll make the motion, okay, fine.
Second.
Introduce, I'll introduce it, that's fine. Thank you for clarification. Let's go on to the next subject. Uh, Mister City Man, well, actually, going back to that other one, I think we've been doing a pretty good job of letting people speak their minds, so I think we've already kind of been, so it's just a formality, so thank you. Mister City Manager, your consent calendar, please?
Yes, um, sorry, I have items twenty through twenty-three for approval.
Anybody wanna make the motion?
Move to approve.
Second, please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
At this time, we have discussion action items from council members. Um, council, uh, member, Mayor Pro Tem Valentine, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, this is consider, this is, uh, on cannabis. So recently, I took a cannabis workshop put on by the South Bay Council of Governments. So they made several points about how the new regulations will affect even those cities that have banned sales. So the city of Los Angeles allows, allows delivery of cannabis, so they do have a, a legal law allowing cannabis. But they have been bedeviled by illegal operators. So to discourage this, they have established heavy penalties against illegal operators, including a twenty thousand dollar fine per day against property owners who rent out their property to illegal operators. In the view of LA, the illegal operators compete against the legal operators and really take a lot of the business away from legal operators, which also by, um, by extension takes away the revenue from the city. So even though they allow legal operation, they are, they have heavy penalties against illegal operators. We do not allow legal operation, but we are subject to being, um, invaded by illegal operators because once they, once they see what the fine is in Los Angeles, they're going to go to the areas where the, the fine is a lot less or no fine at all. So I am proposing a fine imposing a twenty thousand dollar per day penalty on any property owner who rents out his or her property to a cannabis business. That's the first thing. Now, this is not on the, this is not on the, um, discussion action items, but I'd like to add it. Another problem that has been encountered by those who have legal operations is that delivery companies have been failing to ask companies for customers for their ID. So even, so, so you know that the, um, the state, uh, the, the Board of Cannabis Regulations allows delivery to any legal address. So that means whether, whether you've, whether you have banned it or whether you have not banned it, whether you have legal operations in the city or not, it can be delivered anywhere. But the person who receives it is supposed to be over twenty-one. Well, what has been happening with delivery companies, even in areas where, where, uh, there has been legal operation, delivery companies have been delivering it anywhere. They, they bring it to an address, they drop it, or they bring it to an address, and they just, they just deliver it, take the money and leave. They don't determine that the, um, that the person receiving it is over twenty-one. That's a violation. So my, uh, my second proposal, and this is what I'd like to add to the, to the, to the ordinance, to draft the ordinance to require that a delivery must be made to a person who shows ID demonstrating they are over twenty-one, and also that no person under twenty-one may receive a delivery of cannabis. And the reason for saying, what, using that language in that way is that not only would the person who deliver it be in violation, but the person who receives it is also in violation if they're under twenty-one. So that's my proposal.
Um, to the chair. You wanna go first? Can I say something?
Go ahead.
Is that fine? Um, no, thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward before. Is that fine? Um no, thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward before the council. Um, no matter what your opinion is on the cannabis and every, you know, the whole thing. Uh, I mean, I, I don't really look at it as much as a charitable thing to make sure that these legal businesses are so profitable because we wanna help them out. That's not the purpose of that, in my eyes. In uh, the way I look at it. Okay, very good. The way I look at it.
Yes.
Is uh, there's two concerns that I've heard from law enforcement. From law enforcement and from a health standpoint, is that um, the unregulated ones, the ones that are like illicit. You know, not regulated without permits. Those foment a lot of gang activity here in the city of Hawthorne. Gangs are starting to get, get involved with those. Uh narcotics traffickers are setting up shop. You're supposed to be regulated in order to, so these things could eventually be taxed, right? We wanna bring it, make it a mainstream type of uh thing, that it's controlled, that the product's regulated, make sure it's safe. That these narcotics traffickers and these gangs aren't experimenting with uh product that is uh taking uh. Concentrations to the, to, to the limit. And people, you know, there could be lethal doses of what they're produ- giving out there. So I look at it and both, as both uh. Trying to do away with criminal gangs and narcotics traffickers getting their tentacles. And also for the health reasons that, you know, we could ensure, uh we avoid any problems when it comes to health risks and hazards for people that are going to be using. This product, so um, I liked, I wanted to add that to the whole thing, that that's uh the way I'm looking at it as well, and there's concerns on the community because of that, so. Uh regardless, I think we need to have a strong arm approach to this and give our police officers and our um city attorney's office a, a weapon to be able to use against. Those uh fly-by-night operations. Go ahead, Mr. Interro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I agree with this because I also attended those workshops that Ms. Valentine uh described at the South Bay Cock. About the, you know, marijuana sales and delivery. So we do have to take precautions. So what I just passed around is because remember like in two thousand seventeen, the city of Hawthorne passed the ordinance number twenty one forty eight. You know, that uh ordinance banning commercial sales of non-medical marijuana in the city of Hawthorne. Basically, it was no dispensary, right? But what we didn't, I think at that time, people didn't realize that Hawthorne is surrounding of non-incorporated area of Los Angeles. Right? It's just one street away or just a sidewalk away. So this past weekend, a marijuana dispensary just opened. Right on Ingle, on the other side of Inglewood, I'm not gonna mention the, the community, but it's the community of Wiseburn Community, so. It's on that side, but I, you know, if you think about Hawthorne Muslaj on this other side. So it's a hundred tw- twenty-third street and Inglewood Avenue. So anybody can go in there. And show your ID, they put your name on the computer and you buy whatever you want. I have not been in there, but two people that I know, that is a member of my Hawthorne Muslaj went in there. So to investigate what was going on over there. So now, we have a dispensary right like less than a hundred feet from our city. Right? So this is where we as, you know, residents of Hawthorne, we need to figure it out. Are we gonna take, let other people take advantage of this business that is actually producing some sales tax, some income? Because like I said, Hawthorne is surrounding a non-incorporated area, and this is going to impact our city. So then we going to try to figure out what we're going to do, just suck on our tongue. Or not, and let other people take advantage of this supposed to be sales revenue that we could maybe. Come up with some resolution, some policy to say, we're going to do something because then all these non-incorporated areas gonna have. This type of dispensary. Then, when we went to that workshop, all these cities are contemplating have dispensary. Manhattan Beach, Redondo Beach, even PV, Holland Hills. Everybody is coming to line about allowing dispensary because they know that it's making some money. The state actually is gonna come up with this called track and tracing. So they're gonna try to figure out exactly how much money the dispensary are making uh through the system that they are going to do. And the other thing that people have to be aware, that a lot of these products that you buy online. On the seven eleven, on the gas station. And claim that they have some CDB or so, or all those other products, they have zero. They have researched, analyzed those products, those products have no type of the, those CDB and the TLC, whatever they're calling. No matter what the type, those products are fake. They just taking your money, you buying stuff that you thinking that's gonna cure your cancer or your anxiety. But those things are full of water and sugar. None of those products have none of the so-called, you know. So people have to be that the only place that you actually can buy those oil and those other products. Is, is a dispensary that has been legally licensed. That have those content that's gonna help your Alzheimer's or your uh arthritis, arthritis or everything like that. So that is where, as a, as a city council, as a city of Hawthorne, we need to decide what we're gonna do. Just wait and see, all these other ma- dispensary coming and the money running away from our city? Because a lot of people, during I was campaigning, a lot of people say why Hawthorne don't have dispensary, right? So I know it's, it's a lot of legal issue, it's ups and downs, pros and cons, but think about it, we're gonna be surrounding. Non-incorporated areas, these other cities have, you know, Inglewood, Gardena, so. And then, you know, we are not a rich city. Those other cities are rich, you know, Manhattan Beach, Redondo Beach, Hermosa Beach, Palos Verdes. Siglen Hill, all of them is getting to this business. Even some NBA players. Joe Montana. Ricky Williams, all these people are making money, millions of dollars, and here we are, Hawthorne struggles sometimes to pay the bills, so think about that.
Through the chair. You know, if you live long enough, you get to see some crazy things, you know, that uh, that uh. Illegal marijuana is complaining about illegal marijuana. You know, and they're taking my money away and I'm gonna call the police. You know, um, so you know, you, you kinda have to deal with the realities of, of what's happening, you know? And um. You know, the, 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 the problem, uh, uh, little I know about, and I could be wrong, is that this is an all cash business.
It is.
You know, and that's a problem with it, is that it's an all cash business because the federal government has not accepted marijuana as illegal or what have you. So there's still a lot of issues about crime associated with uh, with marijuana. And you know, that's something to take into consideration, but I, I agree. I mean, if they're putting one on that side of Inglewood Avenue. Then for all intents and purposes, Hawthorne is selling marijuana.
Yeah.
Or cannabis or whatever, you know? And whether it's something that you need to re- accept, realistically accept it. It's coming whether we like it or not. Uh, when do we succumb to it? That's, I don't know. You know, when, 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 you know, I had this conversation with, with a fellow the other day talking about it, and I said, listen. When I could go in Vons and buy it, then I'll accept it, it's, it's uh, it's really made it mainstream. You know, uh, uh, still, you're still dealing with a product that's still somewhat seedy and it still creates a little bit of crime. And I think they got a lot of bugs that to get out of it, but I think that sooner or later, this is something that we're gonna have to really deal with. Uh and then maybe we can regulate it and get something good out of it, you know? But I didn't know, I didn't know about this, and you're right, if, if they're putting it over there, they'll put it over there uh, uh, uh in um. Alcamino Village, you know, Landale or wherever, you know?
Part of the. Yukon and Quinshaw, it's non-incorporated, Bel Air.
But yeah, that's kind of ironic and it's comical and not so tragic, you know, that.
Yeah.
You've got legal and illegal uh stores going at each other and one complaining that they're undercutting me. Because they don't have to pay the taxes and the reg- and that, that's their argument. Their argument is that the, the marijuana industry or the cannabis industry is getting taxed, really taxed heavy. And then the illegal shops are not subject to any of that. So it's killing the legal guys and so, I don't know.
Through the chair. Through the chair. Okay, so um, to address something that you said, uh first of all, I don't, I don't want to be pressured. Because there are shops being set up on our doorstep, and I, and I, I recognize that that's the case. Um, there, to me, there's a, there are a lot of reasons not to. The, first of all, the revenue and, and the cities that have accepted it are not getting what they thought they were going to get. The state is not getting what it thought it was going to get. Um, it's not even close to what it thought it was going to get in terms of, of revenue from cannabis. So let's say if they thought they were going to get a million dollars, they may be getting two hundred thousand. It's that much of a difference. Because there is so much illegal operation, and Los Angeles has been bedeviled by illegal operations. So even though you have cities that have adopted it and regulated it, you've also got a lot of illegal operators. And they congregate around in the areas where the legal operators are, and you're quite right. They don't have to pay the regulations, they don't have to pay any taxes, and they can, I guess, I suppose they can sell it cheaper. I don't know what they sell it for. But the point is that you're, wherever you have legal operation, you're going to have a lot of illegal operators. I think it's easier for us to control if we are banning it totally. Because then if there is any operation in the city at all, we know it's oper- we know it's illegal. We don't have to worry about where the legal operation is, where the illegal operation is. Um, and I think at this point, we can still control it. What will happen is if we legalize it, I, 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 I can only, I can predict. That what would happen is we would be surrounded by some legal operators and many, many, many le- illegal operators. And then it would be the job of our police department to parse out and figure out where the legal operations are, where the illegal operations are. And typical of the state, when they, when they pass these laws, they don't give you enough money to do anything to enforce it. So they would probably give us some money, or we'd probably get some revenue, but it would never, it would certainly not be enough to enforce it properly. It would be a strain on our police for enforcement, it would be a strain on our code enforcement. It would be a strain on our police because they would have to deal with the illegal operations. It would be a strain on code enforcement. And, and I think that as it stands now, we, 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 we probably need to just monitor it and see where this is going. I don't honestly think that the money we would get would be worth the hassle and in, and enormous. Um, uh cost in terms of, of, of inconvenience. And in terms of requirements of code enforcement and police that it would require. I don't think it would be worth it. I think we'd get some money. I, I, I would bet we may break even. I'll bet we don't get much of a, of a surplus. I, I would say it would probably be much, much less than we thought it would be. And as for the other cities, a lot of the other cities have not decided yet. They're still waiting to see how it's going to, to play out in the rest of the, the state.
Go, go ahead, you wanna say something?
Yeah, I, I do agree with Ms., Ms. Valentine. So there is a lot of, you know, undertem circumstances out there, how this thing is going to be. Uh, but one of the things that we need to come with the grip of reality, like for example, that store right there on Inglewood. Is delivering. So that's, it doesn't mean, you know, so even we can ban it, we can say we don't want no store or no nothing. But now, they are delivering everywhere in Hawthorne, anywhere in Landale, anywhere that people call, they are delivering. And, and that is what I'm saying, you know, so, so we seeing these things happen over and over again. And the other thing to keep in mind, because like our cities, you know, we banned this uh, the sale of marijuana. So all the revenue that go to the state, we don't get, we don't have, we don't get no money from it. That's one of the things that the, the state have said, that you ban legal sales of marijuana in your city, you will not get no money from. From the uh revenue that's coming from the marijuana sales. You know, the, the, yeah, yeah, for our code enforcement or for our, you know, for anything, or for our police department. So you are not part of that system. So we will not get money to say, to help the sheriff if they need it, right? Or to help the LA County Sheriff, because we know right there is gonna spill to, to our city. It's not like we're gonna be immune, but I, I'm guaranteed that our Hawthorne PD is gonna get involved later, sooner or later. Because all these non-incorporated area that is ruled by the county of Los Angeles and by the sheriff. Uh, we gonna have to spend some resources, and then we don't collect nothing. Just think about that. I'm not saying to, to like legalize marijuana tomorrow or whatever, or the dispensary tomorrow, what I'm just saying. Just start thinking about it, because we have to, we have to make a decision to see, we're gonna spend resources. And then we're not getting a dime from the state or from the county because we banned it. Think about it.
Um, through the chair. I think what we should do is to make, make a concerted effort to study this issue. And see what is going on in the cities around us and what they're experiencing. And, and, and just, just do that for a few months and see where this is going. But I, I would like to pass this ordinance, I mean, I would like to, I'm, the discussion action item. I would like to go ahead and add that to the ordinance because I think that that will help us in terms of. If anyone o- opens, now you're talking about not getting revenue, we might get revenue from illegal operations. Because if any property owner rents to uh, an operator. If any, if any property owner rents to an operator in our city, it's illegal at this point.
You know what?
And so therefore, we will get revenue.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent on that, on that part.
Some revenue.
In five days, if, if the revenue from one of these shops is a hundred thousand or um, for a whole year's worth of operation, a hundred thousand. According to this uh ordinance that she's asking for, over five days of one of those illegal ones being op- uh kept open. Will get the same or more revenue. I like this more. So uh.
I second that, you know?
So like, uh, look, I think, uh, I think you make a lot of sense with what you're saying. Is it common, is it something to think about? Yes. And I understand your approach too. We can wait and observe to see what kind of uh situation the city of Los Angeles is going. All these other cities are seeing what's happening, and you know, it's becoming a headache for them over there. Um, marijuana will, the cannabis marijuana is going to be still con- considered a controlled substance. Uh, on par with alcohol. If you go to work under the influence of either, you're gonna probably lose your job. They could test for, you know, they could see you visibly drunk, or they could test you to see if you have like ingested marijuana in your system. So um, we have liquor stores that open up. If we would allow them, these liquor stores will be opening up on any single, every single corner of the city of Hawthorne. Um, if we allowed for these marijuana shops to open up, they'd be willing to open up anywhere, so if we wait. It's not, there's not gonna be any shortage of businesses wanting to open up in the future if we decide to do so. Uh but I think right now is a good opportunity to see how the city of Los Angeles deals with it.
But Mr. Mayor, you just, you're sorry, you just said something that is not completely correct. That if we regulate, we can say we want two dispensary, three dispensary, or zero dispensary. So we can say, we, we can regulate, we can say we can only allow two. Yeah, exactly. It's not, they cannot open everywhere, so ten, fifteen, twenty, no, they cannot.
But what's happening in Los Angeles, you know, we have like a, our, we have like a ninety-five to a hundred police force. And we know that uh we'd have to stretch ourselves thin to be able to police that and regulate that and chase after these and build a case against these illegal shops. That's why this is necessary in the meantime, to have some type of weapon in, on our end to be able to control it. Um, but to, to your point, I believe the revenue is small to, to, to say that it's something that's gonna benefit us as a city. Uh from some estimates, it's been like fifty to a hundred thousand per shop, per year. I mean.
You're lying.
I don't, well, I don't know, you made the calculations or something, who you're talking to.
Through the chair.
But I just think from, from, from what I sense, if somebody thinks it's different, let me know, educate me, please. I'm not saying that uh, that I have the word, but these are the last figures that I've heard from some of these. I'm not saying that uh, that I have the word, but these are the last figures that I've heard from some of these. By the way, there's uh these consultants, these cannabis consultants, there's a dime a dozen, they're like hungry wolves wanting. I had like twenty in the last couple of years wanting to meet with me to see what we could do here in the city. So there's no shortage of these businesses, legal ones, wanting to open up in any city. So I think a careful approach would be uh wise right now.
Go ahead, go ahead. He was gonna, Mr. City Manager, you're gonna mention something.
Yeah, go ahead.
So um we, we never looked into this as, you know, revenue coming to the city, we never looked into it that way. Then initially, we looked into it with our police department also, last year or whenever it started. We are looking into bringing some revenue in order to have resources to fight illegal activities. When you have these shops are opening as if they are in Hawthorne, as Councilmember Montero mentioned, the one on Inglewood Avenue, it is in Hawthorne. And if the other ones opened up in our border lines and our border streets, they are in Hawthorne. Even the ones that are in neighboring cities or Long Beach or city of. I lost my microphone temporarily. So uh this is one thing uh that we were looking into, say a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand just to help provide resources for our police department to be able to enforce regulations. That's what you're, because we definitely need more. We need more uh help, we need more uh enforcement uh power to, to fight illegal activities. The other aspect of it, uh that Mr. Mayor you mentioned about we wait until um those who did this ahead of us, instead of they had the upper hand to uh impose tax. When you wait, you lose that opportunity. When someone comes, let's say a couple of years, three years from now to open in Hawthorne, the tax that he pay may be a lot less than, you know, so they get, yes, if you wait, then there is no. We, you're gonna lose it altogether. And so if you wanna look into it, you can ask me to, if you like, you can give me directives to do the study on this and come back with a comprehensive report. So then city council can decide, you know, all the, uh you know, ups and downs and pros and cons of, of the issue. Because if you wanna do something, then you cannot wait in order to bring resources for our police department to, to enforce regulating and, and to enforce new regulations. Um you know, other, otherwise, um it will be a lost cause if you wanna just wait. If you like, I can do a study, I can get a study done and come back to city council.
Do the chair too. Um so both sides are correct. What we need from this ordinance, we do need this passed. You know, even though it's, you know, an illegal dispensary fighting against a legal dispensary, it's funny. But no, this order is something we do need to, to push forward, and I totally agree with it. But both sides have, I, I, I can be like the devil's advocate. Put both sides out there. The reason why they're showing low amount of revenue coming in is because since it's a cash, hello? Since it's a cash business and there's nowhere to put the money, there's no way to track the amount of money. So the revenue you could potentially see in the city could be tremendous, but because there's no way for us to track it now, the, what consultants are gonna show you, it's gonna be a lot smaller. When you're addressing, I think we, we've, we're doing the research to how to address it when it was first coming up. Um cities get mapped out way ahead of time. So I, what our city manager was mentioning as well, I don't think he touched on it is when certain dispensaries start opening up, especially this illegal one, um that automatically affects our mapping in a sense. So now, say if in the future we did want to open or allow dispensaries in the city of Hawthorne, if you have all these other dispensaries that are in county or different cities already popping up, then it will limit the scope of where we can even allow it. To the point where then we might not be able to place them where we would wanna place them, is because we're zoned out by all other um dispensaries. So I, I think that's why our city manager mentioned, if you do want to study this, let him study it now. Um if not, then it kind of dies now. So that's kind of the, the stance we should, we should look into it. It's either yes, look into a study, if not, then we'll just be zoned out. But it all depends on what the council feels, if they wanna even allow it in the city of Hawthorne or, or not.
Also imposing penalty is not guaranteed. You know, we can impose uh forty thousand dollars a day. If they are not paying, if they are being arrested for illegal activities and they don't have the money to pay, it's not worth it for us to even uh take him to court and, and battle legally. Because it's gonna cost us more than, a lot more than the penalty that we are not even able to, to recover, to, to collect.
Through the chair.
Um I think, I think, I mean, I, I heard what you said, uh, uh council member, what? Being mapped out, but if you look at LA and if you drive down some of the boulevards, there's like one on every other corner down Figaro, one on, down every uh other corner on Broadway. So I mean, if it's working over there and there's like a probably slightly denser uh areas as we, compared to us, I think there would still be an opportunity for any of these people to uh wanna open up. I mean, I mean, if, if the uh will of the council is to go ahead and try to see if this could be a revenue maker because of that, or are we trying to get ahead of the problem to try to like uh do the policing? Um and I would think a lot of the, these twenty people, twenty, even a former uh elected official here in the city of Hawthorne is in, is in the business of marijuana. Uh I would say that if, if they were to entice you, I think they'd give you the upper spectrum of how much money a city could make as opposed to the low end. So inflate certain types of uh revenue so that they can entice you to open up. You could potentially make this much if you open up, trust us, this is in that. But uh I do understand like the, you know, the argument also that the, since it's a cash business, et cetera, would probably show uh, show uh immediately once you open one up as a low end. And maybe once it's regulated, it could show uh, uh on the higher end, but how much higher, it's an unknown. We might just stay stagnant, uh stay at a low point and it might, might have not been worth the effort all along, so.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh man, actually, I agree with uh Arnie that we should do a, a study and, and come up with some recommendation. And, and, and let me just say that, you know, nobody have approached me about, about open days or how much we can make money, nothing that. I just went to the workshop and did some research over and over. And one thing that I like the idea that the state, they have acknowledged that it's a cash business, but they are going to solve that problem. They are going to come up with the called track and tracing that is going to be able to tell exactly how much these dispensers are making. So they already in process have come up with a solution that is going to track each dispensary, how much it's gonna make. And, and, and that is going to tell them exactly what is the annual revenue that it's coming from each city or each locality. So and, and again, just remember that there is fourteen different licenses of, of this marijuana business. So, so they have a different, and that's what I'm saying. We, and what Arnie said pretty well, we going to use resources from our general fund and from the police department, and then we're not getting nothing back from nowhere, right? So and then especially now because they're delivering, right? There is no sales tax on delivery on that, on that end. So, so then we're not gonna get no sales tax because it's not like the Amazon or the, or the Google. So that's the kind of thing that we need to come up, like I agree, to do the study, do, do it the right way. And then we will decide, do we wanna open two dispensary, do we wanna skip zero, do we wanna ban or we wanna? And then the other thing that uh Mr. Hader just said is the fact that Hawthorne is very small. And when you're starting to look at the map and then you're going to have to take in consideration all the schools, then your map is limited. And so, so just think about that. That is all these things that needs to be processed and think about.
And that's, that's fine and dandy and everything. And it should, the map should be small because we have a lot of churches. The map should be small because we have a lot of, of uh, a lot of schools, yeah, a hundred percent. I don't think the community is well aware that about ten, eleven, twelve years ago, there was like, uh, there was a marijuana cultivating operation happening next to one of our schools, the Hawthorne School District. I don't think you know that, so um that's being said. No, illegal, but then who's to say that some of these, what we were considering, it's a cash business. Are they necessarily paying their taxes as they should? Maybe some aren't. Maybe some of them are not reporting what they're actually selling. So who's to say that some of these uh legal businesses are reputable to, reputable to begin with? Uh what, have we been able to qualify them and, and, and see, hey, you know, are they selling to the people who they should be selling? Are they selling to minors? Are they, you know, all this other stuff? Who's to say that they're reputable to, reputable to begin with? Do we have a benchmark? Do we know what the city of Los Angeles is experiencing? So we don't know that. So we're, right now, we're assuming legal versus illegal, bad versus good. Who says that the good, that what we're concerned and good are gonna be like, uh, what you call it, legit in all manners of being? It'd be nice if it was that way, so we wouldn't have to worry about it, but we don't know that yet. But uh.
I, 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 I must.
This is good conversation, I like it.
Now, I'm, I must horn in here with the, the whole idea that our decision is based solely on making money. That troubles me tremendously because my feeling about marijuana, although, you know, there are studies that can go this way or that way, whether or not it's a gateway drug or not a gateway drug. What are we telling our children if we uphold the idea that we're going to make money off of, off of something that could e- eventually harm them to their detriment? There's no way if you, if you legalize this, you're going to limit it to twenty-one year olds. That's not going to happen. You can hope that it would, and it, and the, and the legality is that they're not supposed to deliver to anyone who's under twenty-one. But you know that our high school children will be smoking it, you know that our elementary school children will be smoking it. Everybody will be smoking marijuana. And, and some will be saying, oh, but it's, it's not a gateway drug, they'll smoke it, they won't become addicted to anything else. Maybe they will and maybe they won't, but they'll be in a culture where this is considered okay. I'm, I just don't want that for the children of Hawthorne, and that's how I feel.
But Ms. Valentine, but they're already doing it.
Through the chair.
Okay, because it's already legal. You said that we do wanna legalize marijuana, but the state have legalized marijuana.
Yes, and that, and that's the problem, the state, this is, this is another local control issue, isn't it? The state says, you do this. Everything comes out of Sacramento, well, we have no say about.
Illegalize, and they came back and say, oh, now you can deliver anywhere, you know what I mean?
Well, there are, there's pushback against that. That's another thing I was going to suggest.
There is a lawsuit going on uh that it, it's trying to stop that. But a co- one, uh, one legislator commented to me is that, okay, so are you going to stop free commerce? Are you gonna stop Amazon of deliver anywhere? So that, that, that was the, that was what one of the legislators told me. So, so you see how the mentality goes, right? So again, I, you know, in the past, I was a gun marijuana. I don't smoke, cause I don't, you know, cause I don't smoke, I hate smoke. But when we see what's going on right in our neighborhood, right? And even people can, can, can grow in their homes, six plant. They are entitled to grow in their home six plant. So this is the thing that the state just put out there, so now we have to pick up the pieces. Are we going to make it work well that will adapt us, our city and our citizens? Or we're gonna just let go while without regulation, without a saying? Because that is what we're trying to do. So I agree that Arnie should go ahead and do the study. And I'll also agree with you that we pass these fines, even I know like, we can go up and increase it to twenty-five or thirty thousand, I agree with you. So, but Arnie, do that study, please.
Yeah, no, that's a, uh, do you have something else to say? All I wanna say is that, that ship's already sailed, you know? There's nothing we can do about that. Uh I remember a billboard that said, if you wanted to answer the stupid ten seconds later, you know, with a marijuana leaf on it. And, and I know that, and I believe it, that it, it does harm you. I believe that it does harm you. But the law is the law, alcohol harms you as well. So I don't know how many dispensaries we need to make two hundred thousand. Maybe that put that in your, in your.
We're not making money.
You know, if it doesn't make it, you know, at the end of the day, if everything else is lost, well, how much are we gonna make, you know? You know, you know, um but I, I, I really liked this discussion. I really, there's a lot of great points that were made. Councilmember what? Hader made a lot of good points and, you know, so did you and, and uh, you know, I, I think that we lost that battle. Now the question is, what are we gonna do, where are we gonna put it? When, and when?
How do you finish the war? We lost the battle.
Well, we, we lost the battle, yeah, we lost the battle, so we might as well um uh figure out how to live with it. All right, uh go ahead. Councilmember what?
Mr. City Manager, uh you, you brought this up a while ago. What, this, what would this study consist of, or how does, how is the study conducted? Or we get information, is it like a consultancy agency, or how does, how does this next step work?
Yes, um so, uh yes, it will be done by a consultant that they actually can, it can do a, they can conduct a comprehensive study of um all the cities, you know, uh in, at least in LA County. You know, that have adopted and they are already an imposed taxes and those businesses are operating in those cities. So they provide the statistics and then there is also um uh there are different uh var- varieties of uh cannabis business from research, from farming to retail. And wholesale. So because there is no farming, for example, I know some of our surrounding cities in South Bay where uh they were also looking into farm, farm, uh.
Cultivation.
Cultivation, yes. We don't have land in Hawthorne for that matter anymore. So uh the only thing we can focus on will be retail. And then also, uh as far as uh what I mentioned, it's not only about illegal. Like I, like I said before, it is already there, a state already adopted, uh you know, became legalized and, and it is already here. So for example, those, those people who are just planting at homes and consuming it, don't you think that its impact, it may impact their driving behavior, those who are consuming? Of course it does. So now it imposes, this is not illegal, but, but it imposes more now all of a sudden burden on our police department and traffic bureau. So traffic bureau has to be more staffed to have a more grip of control on our driving behavior. So maybe the checkpoints are not enough anymore, so they have to do more. So that's what we were focusing on back then to see, okay, what is it that it can do for us in the city that uh can provide resources to regulate and enfor- and enforce? That's what we were looking into. But I can go back to uh that firm again and ask them for more information and come back. Because whatever we do, I have to bring it before the city council to approve. Proposal and contract, we'll do it quickly.
So it would be the same firm we used before?
Yes, yeah. And, and they have done similar studies for other cities.
Can you bring it in the form of a legal confidential, the report, when it's finally finished?
But the, but the actual agreement to conduct the study, I have to put it on the open.
On pink paper too, if you could.
Through that chair, through the, through the chair, um I would like for that study to include a um a, a, uh, an a- analysis by our police department as to what they believe the impact on their resources would be.
Well, yes, by all means, yeah.
I, right, go ahead, go ahead.
Let, let me say that actually I just, I just recognize the gentleman that did those four workshops for the South Bay Cock, uh he, he's sitting right over there, right? So he's a, an expert, cause he's the one who did those four workshops, uh Daniel, right? Was your name is Daniel? Jonathan. Yeah, so he was the one from the South Bay Cock who did those uh four uh week workshop that I attended, that Ms. Valentine attended. And even Ms. uh Mr. Ramirez also attended one of those workshops. That was there with me, so wel- welcome. I'm glad you were interested in this debate. Thank you.
Thank you for having the discussion.
All right.
All right, thank you guys. Um look, bottom line is, it comes down to, there's a lot of unknowns. Um the city of Los Angeles wouldn't be going through what they had to do if it didn't become a problem. So they're trying to solve a problem. Uh by doing this, is this, is it going to open up a Pandora's box of, of problems with all these illicit uh marijuana shops opening up? Or not? We don't know that for sure. You know, I know our police, you know, our city manager has an opinion, but ultimately, we as city council members are. You know, I know our police, you know, our city manager has an opinion, but ultimately, we as city council members, our policies. It's hard to take them back. Once the Pandora's box is open, it's open. And all these problems are gonna start then, you know what? So we don't, we do, we don't know the inaccurate number with regards to revenue, because it's cash. I mean, there's just too many problems right now. Is it something that's already, the trains already passed and stuff? Yeah, sure, fine. You know, there're a bunch of numbskulls up in Sacramento sometimes. They don't know, they don't think before they do stuff, right? But it's already, you know, the train is already departed from the station and stuff from. So, um, I think a a careful approach would be good.
So I make a the motion to.
Yeah.
With Ms. Valentine's, uh.
On a, on a, yeah, on pink paper, please, the report if we approve it, so that we could take a look and talk about it. Very important. Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, the discussion action item, um, just wanna see how we, how we're handling that.
They're gonna, they're gonna get a.
You're making, you've made a motion to do what?
Uh, Ms. Mayor, I am going to put on the agenda a contract agreement for conducting this study for your approval.
Yes, sir.
When the report is ready, we will provide it as a legal confidential.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
So I I I go back to my my, um, my discussion action item. Um, and, um, I think you're making a motion that, uh, what what is your motion?
So yes, the city attorney can't can't come up with an ordinance, right? You have to come up with an ordinance next meeting for first reading.
Oh, actually, it's not gonna come, uh, it's gonna take longer than that, but I got all of the, uh, information you gave.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Please vote. Is everybody in agreement to get that study? Kind of consensus, this is a show of consensus, excellent.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Uh, City Treasurer, David Patterson, please, uh, if you have anything to report, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I thank the community for coming out and participating in this process. Uh, it sounds like this is a great conversation today. Um, on this subject, I think it was a good idea to, on another subject of marijuana and cannabis, I think it's a good idea to look at the numbers and see if there's a. Net positive to put some money into, uh, you know, in our pockets. Um, and so I think it's a great conversation you guys continue to have. Um, kinda going along with, uh, council member Montero. Had a number of community members ask me about the subject over the years, especially when campaigning and surprisingly, most of the people have been many years my senior. So, which, uh, which surprised me.
There's a lot, there's a lot of hippies around here too.
I had a, a, a gentleman who's retired, uh, and who made a lotion. Right, for, yeah, his community, it's kinda interesting. Um, that's that. I don't know if you guys have heard that the city of Inglewood is facing some challenges with their rent. Um, similar to Hawthorne, probably a little bit worse. Uh, and the city council passed an emergency moratorium for forty-five days to limit rent increases. Uh, and evictions for any reason outside of, um, illegal activities and drugs. Uh, until they pass a permanent ordinance, I spoke with, uh, the mayor of Inglewood at the State of the City event, which was a great event. And he said that the plan is to, uh, pass something that limits annual rent increases by five percent per year. Um, and if, uh, and provide for relocation assistance. If the rent is gonna be increased for more than, by more than five percent per year. So this sounds very similar to what I proposed, um, and put it on as a, um. Item to discuss about a year ago. And I think it's something that, uh, I would like to ask the city to kind of follow this, and once the city of Inglewood passes this. Cause it looks like they will be passing it that we, um, consider an ordinance that mirrors it. Uh, I think that, you know, we've all seen over the last year or so, many of our residents come up and complain about being displaced. Uh, rents going up by fifty percent or more, um, overnight. And, uh, you know, we definitely wanna have an atmosphere that allows development, but allows investors to make their money, but we also need to have a social conscious. As mayor buzzes say it, and, um, allow or encourage developers to write this into the pro forma, pro forma, if there's gonna. Increase their rents by fifty percent or more, they may, they have to allow for relocation systems. So I think it's something we should, uh, should monitor and, um, uh, consider ordinance that mirrors it. Um, that's it.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mister City Clerk?
Yep, this will be a quick comment. Um, so some of our neighbors and employees adjust their schedules to, uh, to attend our city council meetings. Um, therefore, I wanna thank our council and our mayor, uh, city councilor mayor. For getting our meeting started on time tonight, and let's move forward and continue to do that on behalf of our our citizens.
Thank you very much, Mister City Clerk. Um, go go ahead, Councilmember Mike Taguila.
Great spirited debate tonight, I learned a lot. Interesting conversation where where we were at.
Mike. You know, I remember when you used to have to buy your dope on the corner for ten dollars a bag. And today they're arguing about, you know, those were the days when he's talking about those hippies, you know? I grew up in the sixties and in the seventies. I don't, I don't mind, uh, telling you that, you know, and and today. Uh, you know what I'm talking about.
But you didn't inhale, right?
I didn't inhale. I did not inhale, you know, and it it's interesting how we've grown as a society and the things that we've accepted and. And how the, how the, uh, so- society has become, has accepted that. Has accepted that, cause that was very, it was not accepted before. And, um, and I don't know that they know what they're doing, but the reality is, is that. One state after the next, after the next is is accepting marijuana or cannabis. Uh, as a normal vegetable, you know, that people use for different things, so, uh, you know. I'm just amazed by that process, that's it, you know, really, and and I really appreciated this conversation. It was, it was entertaining. And it was in- informative, so, uh, you know, I'm not too thrilled on the rent control thing, but, uh. You know, uh, I think that we have to have a lot of talk about a lot of different things, so that's it.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Alex Montero?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Yeah, it's a great meeting. Thank you for those of you coming tonight, participate on it. Uh, just a quick note of statistics. When Proposition sixty-four was passed, the citizens of Hawthorne vote fifty-eight percent yes. Uh, to legalize marijuana. Just, just an note for that, okay? Rent, rent stabilization is an issue that definitely we have to tackle one day. But, you know, like I said, I I don't believe in rent control, but we do have to look because, yes, rent has been going up tremendously. In in some cases like four hundred dollars, you know, a month. So, um, and we have a lot of families that cannot afford to pay those type of rents. Like right now, you know, two bedroom apartment Hawthorne is eighteen hundred dollar. Like in a few years back, it was only twelve hundred dollar. So, you know, one bedroom now is fourteen hundred dollar. Uh, three bedrooms, you know, like somebody just rented one of the my townhouse right here, you know, for three thousand dollar. And I only pay fifteen hundred for my mortgage. Like I say, oh, maybe I should just move out and rent it. You know what I mean? So, so yes, uh, rent is an issue that, uh, and then again, is this affordable housing that people taking out, you know? Take for granted that we need to figure it out how, so I hope we will talk about that later day. Great State of the City, thank you, Mister Mayor, it was a great job, and thank you for the organizers, you know, the Chamber of Commerce, that I don't see Ms. Donaldson over here. Uh, Ms. Valentine, I attend, oh, and Mike also, we attend the twenty, on February twenty-eighth, we went to the, uh. South Bay City Council of Government, the, uh, General Assembly. It was very well, uh, attended, and they talked a lot of topics, and some of them were about the state taking. Uh, control away from us, you know, like the city government, you know, that, uh, they're passing all these. Uh, laws that is not giving us the ability to govern the way we're supposed to. So we need to be vigilant in Sacramento. Um, on, uh, March second, I went and represented the city at the Medical Legion Palace eight, post two thirty-eight. You know, two eighty-three, that celebrate one hundred years and of service, and also they acknowledge all the, um, uh. The Medal of Honor recipients, and, uh, our own, uh, Neil Gaffton was there also. Uh, so that was a very well attended ceremony. On March sixth, uh, I met with this Mission Community Networking, Inc., is a nonprofit medical group. That exploring possibility to expand to South Bay, maybe Hawthorne, so we'll, uh, more to come. Uh, this, yesterday I went to the Hobby Lobby, uh, but it was after this open ceremony. I went there during my lunchtime because I had to be at the castle, because one of my teacher was sick, so I have to be. Uh, teaching the classroom because of the ratio of children and teachers, it's one to eight, so I have to be there. So I went and met the the store manager, uh, during my lunchtime, and he's a nice guy, so he told me that he was happy to be in Hawthorne. And he did hire sixty-two people from the local area, so they all, you know, create good jobs over there. So again, the other meeting that I attend after the State of the City, I went run to downtown L.A. to the Clean Power Alliance. Some of you might have seen this in your, have you seen this in your mailbox, right? So you don't need to do nothing. The only thing that you have to do if you want more clean power. So they have this lean power, clean power, and one hundred percent green power. So basically, they have three stages. If you are like a environmentalist and want very clean power, energy in your. In your house, or then you call, uh, the one eight hundred number and say, I wanna go from lean power. To one hundred percent green power. That mean you're gonna pay a little bit more. But, uh, the Edison, you're not gonna see no changes, the eight one's gonna still billing you, because you know, everything goes through Ed- Edison. Southern California Edison, so you don't need to do nothing, basically monitor your bill, right? But it's good that this Clean Power Alliance right now have sixteen cities. And in, and they're going to be expand, you know, through other cities. And, uh, right now they have signed up one million customers so far, you know, through this program. So and then now the next phase is the commercial side, so they're gonna be probably contacts, SpaceX, you know, school district, all this. These big business to try to see if they can join the clean power instead of getting power from the, say, from. Nuclear plant, so we're gonna get po- power from the solar panels in the desert or the the windmills. Instead of those, uh, traditional way that we used to get power. So so this is the Clean Power Alliance also to have energy cleaned into your house. So again, uh, I wanna just remind all of you that the Volunteer Appreciation Day is on April twenty-eighth. So the deadline for nomination, even if you're not gonna be there, but nominate people that have helped you in twenty eighteen by April fifth. So, you know, I put some forms outside, so you can nominate people. The only thing you have to do is. Uh, send me their names with a self-stamped envelope with your return address on the corner. So when they got that letter of invitation, so they can come on the twenty-eighth and got their certificate and some orders, okay? So again, don't forget, April thirteen, we're gonna have Earth Day, the Providers Fair, the Bonny Breakfast. And I got thirty case of waters from the Nargate Market Vons, so we we all set on water. So it's gonna be a good day, the Veterans Affairs are gonna have some stuff inside workshop, so April thirteen. Earth Day and a lot of stuff at Memorial Center, and then April twenty-eighth, Volunteer Appreciation Day. And May twenty-third is the K nineteen for barbecue dinner, and also. We are going to have that town hall meeting with the property owners and the apartment owners and property manager on May sixteen at three P.M. At the Venus Room at Memorial Center. So the Republic Allied Ways is sending a letter with the flyer, with the bills, starting in April, and we're gonna repeat that in May. But May sixteen is gonna be the town hall meeting where the Republic Allied Ways is gonna explain about trash, about recycling, about bowl chitmunk. And then I'm also just, uh, Edison is coming, and they're gonna talk about the Clean Power Alliance and Edison. The gas company is coming, the West Basin Municipal Water Board is coming, so it's it's gonna be a good afternoon. Thank you.
Did I say my ten minutes?
Um, we just lost track.
Under ten minutes, yeah?
I'm timing all of you, just so you know.
Oh, my god, wait a minute, all right. Councilmember one?
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor, uh.
Take as much time as you need, don't worry.
The ordinance was only for public, the presentation for the beginning of the council.
Uh, first off, uh, great Save the City, it was wonderful. Um, kudos to Patricia and the Chamber of Commerce for a wonderful event. I'll keep mine short. Um, great discussion. I'm glad everyone came out today. Um, that's all.
Thank you.
Oh, wow, okay.
Give me some minutes, come on, brother.
Okay, uh, Mayor Protem, Olivia Valentine.
Yes, so, um, I'm going to echo the fact that the, uh, South Bay Council of Governments, I attended the South Bay Council of Governments. Twentieth Annual General Assembly, and there were several, I mean, the 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 South Bay Council of Governments always has a wonderful event. This theme was celebrating the past and shaping the future, so they had panel discussions, they had, uh, an exhibition. Um, they had, um, the the panel discussion that I particularly liked was. The the very wheat, free-wheeling one in the morning, which was, they talked about everything that goes on in the South Bay with a lot of South Bay experts. Older people who'd been in the South Bay for many years, and they talked about the proliferation of coyotes to to the refinery, aerospace. They talked about the Mills Act, which provides a tax incentive to people who would maintain an historic home. And so each of the discussants had a, had lived in the South Bay many years and had wonderful stories to share. Um, one, another thing that they had that was really good was Fernando Torres Gill, the director of the Center for Public Research on Aging at UCLA. And he discussed several things. One was where will the long-term care workforce come from? He also discussed, which I was particularly interested in, local activities that neighbors have taken under their own control. In different cities such as the Village Movement, Blue Zones, and this is where neighbors come together and share skills. To help each other what they call age in place. So his expertise is on aging. And so he said all communities should do a needs assessment to determine what is available in the community for providing a continuity of care. So I would like, um, I'd like to 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 provide a directive to staff to invite Fernando Torres Gill to our city council meeting. Um, excuse me. Excuse me, um, Mister Shadur.
You guys are, hey, what's going on? You guys having fun over there or what?
I'd like to make a directive to staff to to invite Fernando Torres Gill to come to our city council meeting. And talk about how our communities can provide a continuity of care, because we have a lot of older citizens. And I I I maintain being concerned about how they're going to age in place. Whether they will have to leave their homes or whether they will have to have someone come in and help them in their homes. And he is an expert on aging at UCLA, and, um, I will, I can, if you like, I can get his information. From Jackie Backrack.
Sure.
On, um, you know, to how and get get in touch with him, but I would like for him to come to city council and talk about that, how we can. Help our citizens age in place. I thought it was an extremely good, good, uh, discussion. The the star though is was was the, um. Was the, um. Oh, yes, Patrick, Dr. Patrick Sun Shong, who, we know him as the owner of the L.A. Times, but he's also so much more. He's also a physician who's actively researching a cure for cancer by harnessing and distributing cells that kill cancer. So he's presently doing clinical trials through his company, Nant Works. He has located in El Segundo. And he's, he's, he expects to open several research facilities in the South Bay, and he's already operating in Sel- El Segundo. And I would also like to make a directive to ask him to come and speak to us about his activities in. Um, in the South Bay, because I think he's, he is, he's an amazing resource. Uh, so I'd like to also, um, say that I thought the State of the City, uh, was 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 great Thursday. It was held at the Memorial Center, well-attended by local businesses and agencies in the South Bay region. And emceed by Ray Cordova, who's really very funny. He's the leader of the South County Labor Federation. So, um, I I I particularly liked your, uh, speech, Mayor Vargas. That you used the article that was written about Hawthorne, and you used that as a backdrop to say how the reason they wrote, they wrote that article. Saying that Hawthorne is the best city in which to purchase a home, and you talked about why it's the best place to buy a home, and I thought that was really good. So, and congratulations to everyone, uh, who participated in, um, making it successful, including. And especially the Chamber of Commerce. And, uh, tonight's discussion was amazing. I really thought that we all had a really, had a lot to add to the discussion. I thought that, um, I enjoyed hearing, this is why we we collaborate here on the council. I enjoyed hearing, this is why we, we collaborate here on the council, I think we do a really good job of that. Everyone's voice was heard, and I think, um, we all learned some really important points by listening carefully to what the others were saying, so. Um, with that, that's all I have, thank you, good night.
Alright, thank you, thank you, um, yeah, definitely, we have a good, a great council, and we're, at the end, I feel confident that any decision that may be difficult or even considered controversial, that at the end, we're, we're going to have a well and balanced deci- uh, decision at the end, so I think we have a lot of good points of view here. Uh, we're all headed in the same direction, basically, um, but there's just different considerations that people are bringing up that at the end will put, uh, the city of Hawthorne forward and in control and added advantage, so I think that's a great thing. So I really appreciate the Hawthorne and the Chamber of Commerce and the committee that helped organize the State of the City. Uh, was really excited to share a lot of the great news as to where we are as a city, we've come a long way. And, uh, we're coming out in the newspaper, and we're coming out of the news, and we're, uh, for great things, for great, uh, in city improvements, businesses that are moving to town, we're known as a technological hub for aerospace here in the city of Hawthorne with, uh, SpaceX, with the Boring Company, with Tesla's design centers being here, and other shops that are opening up to support them. New businesses like Hobby Lobby, uh, you know, we have a, a couple of other stores and restaurants that are opening up as well. I can't say, because, you know, it's gonna be a nice surprise, uh, so once they do up, happen, you guys are gonna be excited about the different um, things that are opening up here in the city of Hawthorne, so. Uh, Mr. City Manager, could you put a link to the, uh, State of the City address on the website? So that when people open up, they'll be able to, like, find it on the front page, the homepage? That and if, with regards to the, uh, city highlights as well? That'd be great, so that they, when they open up, they see that right there and they could take a look, especially when people wanna come to the city of Hawthorne and do business, so they could see what great things we have to offer. Uh, Vaughn, have you, uh, what have you done with the Parks and Rec video, have you put it out anywhere?
Yes, it's on the department website.
On your department website? Uh, maybe we could rotate the, maybe the State of the City, and then once that's done, can we put the can, yeah, could?
It's already there.
Okay, good, so could we also, once we rotate that out, could we put the Parks and Rec, um, the Parks and Rec video on there instead? Once we give like a good amount of time for the State of the City address or the, the highlights on our website homepage, if we could rotate that out and put the Parks and Rec highlights page, because that's a really nice piece too that they put together. So, um, I also wanna sa- uh, thank everybody on council for a good, uh, well-disussed, uh, item on the cannabis, uh, issue. Um, these are new things, you know, uh, that we're facing, um, a lot of positivity with regards to things and a lot of concerns too, so. I just think, just understand that we're just trying to look out for the community, and, uh, we're not, uh, closed off to progress here. Uh, we just wanna make sure it's careful and it doesn't hurt our city's residents, and we, that we don't bite off more than we can chew, that we can handle it and protect it, our residents, so. Anybody else have anything else to say?
Go back.
Okay, alright, go for it.
I say I wanna piggyback on, on, on Ms. Valentine, because that doctor, Patrick Soon Young, you know, I, precisely being a doctor, but he's a scientist also, cause he worked for NASA and everything like that. So actually, when they opened for question, Mike and I ran to the, to the, to the, to the mic and told him that we have a mall available for him to move into his, uh, more the research facility and a hospital. So, and then he told us, we, I wanna talk to you guys outside, so we went outside, so we talked to him, and he's, uh, one of his director. So, there is a possibility, you know, he might look into, you know, to get more properties, but the one question he asked, do the city own those facilities, see? So that was one question he asked, so, but he's a very, you know, genius guy. So even, I have to tell you too, if you watch, last night, he was at the Time Warner, uh, Spectrum News, they were interviewing him, how, you know, he grew up in South Africa, poor, right? So, so now he's, he's, you know, millionaire guy, so, so he's ho- opening a lot of facilities, he have opened one in, also in Redondo Beach. So, and, and, you know, it's part of LA Times, but also he is devoted into final cure for cancers and some other diseases, because he have come up with this killer gene, uh, that is doing tremendous positive results.
It's, uh, also he's storing energy, I mean, I, I emailed him, I emailed his assistant, he emailed me back, and then we, we went back and forth a little bit, uh, but, um, when I, my impression of him was Leonardo da Vinci. That, that's what I, when I, when I sent him the email, I, I congratulated him, said, you remind me of Leonardo da Vinci, because da Vinci was, uh, uh, so prolific in, in so many different areas, and this doctor is the same thing, I mean, you know, he's parking his money by the LA Times, and I think he owns part of the Lakers as well. Uh, but he has developed a way to store energy, to store electricity, and he said the, the issue with electricity is not the creation of electricity, it's how to store it, you know, and so he's developed a way to store electricity, where he's taking it all over Africa, and then places far in the middle of nowhere, they can light up little villages and little towns and stuff like that by the, the, the method that he has implemented, so the guy's brilliant, you know, the guy's brilliant, I was just trying to sell him the mall. And, uh, like if I owned it, you know, but at least I wanted to get a dialogue going with, with his assistant, and we did, you know, we did. And so I, I, I got the information from Arnie, I sent him, I said, because he said, well, it doesn't work right now, so, well, just in case that in the future, you have a chance, here's a contact information, and we left it at that. But the guy, really, if you could get that guy over here, everybody, you'd listen to a person that you rarely get an opportunity to, that is, that is making that sort of impact on hu- on, on, uh, on humanity, guy's great.
Alright.
I'm a fan.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah, I'm a big fan.
Anybody else have anything to say, uh, Mr. City Clerk or Mr. City Treasurer?
Wild Wings Wednesday at the American Legion, between four and eight PM.
Alright, good, good.
Wild Wings Wednesday at the American Legion, between four and eight PM, I was just giving that information.
Alright, that's it, thank you.
As an advocate of the community, I have nothing to say.
Oh, wow, alright, 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 okay, no, thank you so much, folks, alright, thank you all for being here. Thank you.